Oh, got it. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's cool. Thank you. All right, it's 5:30. Let's call this meeting to order, please. Welcome, everyone. Oh, thank you. Sorry. I invite those who are willing to stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So I got-
Thank you, Mrs. Wees. Thank you, Mr. Oy. Want to make any comments? Mr. Anderson?
We just had a couple of additions that came in late, and we actually got one this afternoon. So, other than that, I think we'll be going through everything here tonight, so.
Okay. All those in favor of the agenda with the additions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll go on to number four. Visitors, 4.1, community concerns. Mary.
Wendy, we did agree with it. I thought, you know, I'm here for ninety-three minutes. I might as well use them. But anyway, I am a parent that, and I guess that's somewhere close enough, but that does value parent-teacher conferences, live and in person. I think emails are my thing. They don't give you the emotion texting thing. Phone calls, actually, I haven't used phone calls, and I will say that's very difficult. You have to know the teacher's schedule. If that teacher is a coach, they're pretty much gone right after school. Before school is pretty hearing, too, I feel. So, yes, it can be done, but I love a dedicated night, whether your students have any trouble or not. I also value coming into the classroom and sort of seeing what the classroom looks like. Maybe there's some artwork out there. It's like, oh, didn't know they did that poster on Republicans or Democrats, or whatever it may be. I find for myself that there's a lot of value to coming into the building and speaking directly to the teacher and having a dedicated night, but I think it's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Any other ones? Deb, just Mary?
Yep.
All right, let's move on to number five, the consent agenda. Are there any items, 5.1 through 5.10, that anyone would like removed individually to discuss? Any of them? No? All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as is? Thank you, Mrs. Pals. Any second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wees. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number six, administrative reports and information, 6.1, admin, 611. Jackie.
Budget to date looks good, and we're at sixty-nine percent. Last year, we were at seventy percent. Contingency is still sitting there. Did a couple of minor budget transfers and... It's about it.
Any questions for Jackie?
Still green, right?
Yep.
Before you say green or red.
Oh.
All this, only you can say that, too.
Okay.
All positive.
That's good.
Thank you, Jackie. 6.1.2, Mr. Strasser.
All right. Before I get to our handbooks, you know, the main thing going on around school would be prom this weekend. So that's kind of a big deal. We're getting into that, and I know setup will be occurring later in the week. But we've... Just a busy time with kids getting pretty excited and getting all the things necessary to go to attend a prom. Obviously, there's a lot of testing going on that's continuing. We did the ACT test, so considering our efforts on the ACT prep, I'm really curious. It's going to be a while before we get results, but just really curious as to how that'll come out. Hopefully, we made some good changes there, positive for our kids. So, the main thing I wanted to look at tonight was our handbook. If that's a... This is the right time to do that?
They're actually on business later, so we don't have to-
Okay.
-cover them right now.
All right, I'll cover that later. So, that's my report.
Thank you. Prom is on Saturday?
Saturday night, yes.
What time does it start? Saturday.
Nobody's asked that question.
Sorry.
Yeah, when it starts?
In the 4:30, 5 o'clock range.
Clay is here. I'm sure he'll...
Activity's directed.
All right, thank you, Mr. Strasser. Sorry I asked the rough question.
Oh, shoot.
6.1.3, Ms. Barbin.
Good evening, everybody. Um, us, too, we are also just finishing up with MCA testing this week. We did reading last week and are finishing up with math with our third and fourth grade. And really, I've just been busy dealing with our retirements and some of our people who have gone to their hometown to teach. And so, we've had some sad moments at our elementary schools and just filling those positions. So I've been busy interviewing a lot.
And we've got some good candidates.
We've got some great candidates.
There's a lot of pool to pick from. That's cool.
Yep, yep. And we've had a lot for all the different categories we've had open, so, yeah. So, big decision at the end of this week, I think. So, decisions, I should say. So, that's really all I have, too. So.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Barbin? Thank you. School board members, any committees want to report?
We had a policy committee that we went through, I don't know, quite a few policies that we're going to go through later tonight. A lot of it was just changes that the... Is it the MSBA, you know, wanted us to do as far as just wording and things like that? I don't think there's any huge changes that we did as far as changing the actual policies.
The only one maybe would be our fund balance policy that kind of came out of our finance committee, but other than that, the rest are all MSBA recommendations, so.
Okay.
些wording changes, and that was about it.
It wasn't.
Thank you.
Updating them.
Buildings and maintenance, we met-
Couple weeks ago?
Couple weeks ago with Clay and the city and Cal and ISG and all of us and kind of what we want to do and colors and moving some cement around, and Clay wanted water and electricity in there, which is a must.
Details, some of the details, what we wanted, and so they would all get put in there. I think we also had a conversation with the city on that and some of the... There's a boundary, which I'll talk a little bit about in my report, but we found that we'll be able to resolve that, so that's good.
Good.
The city was going to remove-
Trees?
Trees on the north side, as far as we need to go to get it set in there. Sounds like we're able to leave the west side trees and the two entrances. We'd have to take maybe one tree out to have an entrance on the south end of it. But it should be very well protected, and then sounded like they were going to plant trees around the small kids' ball field on the northwest side, like six or eight-foot evergreens. So in a few years-
And they may even put a few to complete the line of trees alongside the tennis court, too, so.
The city was going to take some dirt and pile it for the school to be able to use and save us some money there.
Thank you. Any other committees?
Budget?
Budget Committee men, we did a little budget review, and then we talked about items that we might want to include on a second question for the levy. Okay, thank you. And I just have a thank you from Jackie Hess for the passing of her father for the plant that we sent them. So you can look at this a little later, so. So, thank you. All right, 6.3, Superintendent Anderson.
Our enrollment this month was, I believe, it was one less than last month, so pretty stable. No issue there. The city has found that the district and the city made a lease agreement back in 1987 where Paulson Field and the school and the city ball fields were that butts up against. There's a shared use, ninety-nine-year lease, which is probably going to, well, it takes care of any concerns because we were pretty close to the line and what were we going to do? But they found one that was done back in eighty-seven, so I think we're kind of a green light there with all of that. And I talked today, Cal had been in contact with the city, and it sounds like they're going to start taking some of those trees out. So, it's going to get started, and we'll talk a little bit about Kelly, with Kelly tonight, about some of the financing. But I think we're on our way to getting that done. Also, we received a notice from the teachers to begin negotiations. So, the negotiations committee, we will be getting together and meeting, I believe, either this week or next week and probably next week to talk a little bit about some of the things that the committee needs to know for negotiations. And then we'll set up a meeting with the teachers to kind of start things off. So, that process will begin. I know there's some language things that we'll take a look at. I don't know, is Teacher Appreciation Week in here? Did we-
First week of May.
No, it's actually, I think it's the May 7th to the 12th.
May 9th is National Teacher Day. But after speaking with Cory, we kind of opted to go with the third. It's different websites and different things, one's May 1 through 5, one's May 7 through 13. But Cory said he was going to go with May 1 through 5. Is that what-
Well, that's the one that I guess I've seen.
Yeah.
That's when I had seen it.
And I was supposed to have some kind of something ready for Wendy to say tonight, but I wasn't in today, so.
Well, I think we can, I don't know if that's part of this, can we have a motion to just recognize May 1st to the 5th as Teacher Appreciation Week here at Pipestone area schools?
Absolutely.
And then we'll just take care of some things and make sure that everyone gets a little note of appreciation for the work that they do. We do have a great teaching staff here in our district, and so it's good to just recognize them.
I'm grateful you're willing to do that. So I make the motion that we approve May 1st through-
The 5th.
The 5th as Teacher Appreciation Week.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Oy. Any other discussion? Any other discussion on that? Any other discussion?
I think I'll just kind of see if there's some things that we can do just to, some tokens of appreciation from on behalf of the school district to the teachers and-
Tons of stuff online. If you go look at it, there's lots of different activities that people do.
It's little things, but, you know, little things sometimes go a long way.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting May 1st through the 5th as Teacher Appreciation Week signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And then my final item is we began the interview process for the Director of Curriculum Teaching and Learning. We have a couple of interviews this week. Ms. Bartman, Mr. Strasser, and I are doing the interviews. And so, we've got four good candidates that we'll be conducting interviews on, and hopefully we'll be able to come up with a recommendation here in about a week or so.
Ms. Bartman's on an interview marathon.
Will it just be a year contract, or is it?
It'll be an administrative contract.
Okay.
And they're same as a principal, so they have probationary status and how all that works, so. But they would follow the same rules that way.
So are they in Cory's, Cory and Tony's union, then? How's that work?
Well, that hasn't been a part of the negotiation, but we're going to be basing the contract off of an administrative contract. So, that'll be after we get done with our selection of having that kind of contract negotiation. So I'll probably get the negotiation committee also involved in that to just look over it and make sure it's okay.
Good.
You good?
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any questions? Any other questions for him? All right, let's move on to number seven, 7.1, approved the school calendar for 2017-18 and 2018-19 school year. Did anyone have any questions after looking that over for Mr. Anderson?
This was old business, so we need a motion to-
Okay, to bring it back?
Yeah.
Bring it on back. Do I have a motion to bring it back? Was it tabled?
Yes.
To bring it off the table? Thank you, Mrs. Pals. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wees. Any other questions on that, or any of the other discussion on that? All right, all those in favor of bringing it off the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
What was, why we put it on the table was there was a question over what to do with the parent-teacher conference in November. We've had some, the administration has been feeling like we could utilize that day differently and put it into a fourth day, in-service day prior to school, and have like open houses and meet the teachers and kind of do the parent-teacher type conference before school rather than November. The reason, and there were teachers who felt that we should, and their recommendation was to keep it in November, but it was primarily the elementary through middle school that was interested in that. High school was open to doing something different. I think when we had the conversation, it was, you know, what would the plans be? So I think administration feels pretty comfortable that, you know, we can put something together and have a couple of pretty productive, or a couple of productive sessions there, and we'll see how things go. You know, the idea of parent-teacher conferences, the high school, we probably have twenty-five percent attendance at parent-teacher conferences. Elementary and middle are very, are a little bit higher attended rates due to some of them are scheduled and such, but we would like to do a little more... We still want to have that opportunity for teachers and parents to meet and talk prior to school beginning. But then really, the idea of parent-teacher conferences, it really shouldn't wait until a day that it's, you know, to meet. If there's concerns, they should be more reactive, more responsive, teachers, parents. I think we want to make sure that everybody understands if you want to meet a teacher, let's set up a time, let's get together. We don't have to wait until November. We don't... And if there's something going on right now in April, get all the teachers, teachers get all the parents, let's sit down and have conversations. I believe I talked with Mr. Strasser, and, you know, they're having a parent meeting this week with, you know, just some things that are going on. And, I mean, those are the type of things that we were looking at, trying it a little bit differently and see how it goes. So, and I think the committee went back, reviewed it, and said, let's go forward with this and kind of move forward from there. I believe also that we have the November 7th as a virtual learning day for grades 5 through 12. Just a reminder, that was the intent there. We have election on the 7th, so the idea was to do a virtual learning day for the middle school, high school, because we're having the election here. And elementary will hold classes, and that was all of it. That was what the discussion was. And the 17-18, the calendar is basically brought forward for 18-19 with comparable dates and a comparable thing. But we still will revisit that calendar next year and go over and make any adjustments. So it isn't like it's made two years, but it, we know that it'll be pretty much like that, so. But that's kind of the recommendation of the committee and recommendation from me to move forward with this calendar.
Thank you. So do I have a motion to approve the 2017-18, 18-19 school year calendar?
So I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Oy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pals. Any other discussion? Any other questions? Any other questions?
I think it's worth a try. You can always change it.
If we can change it next year, if it doesn't work, then I'm fine with that, trying it.
I think the elementary already kind of does a school-home connect on the first day of school. Now we're just moving it to that week before.
See, I think that's a great idea. I just hesitate a little bit about the conferences, but I think if teachers are, know that it's their responsibility, you know, it's everybody's responsibility, and that's laid out the first day, I guess, and that we can try it and see and-
How many conferences have you had? If you go back five years ago, when did you have conferences? My guess is, is you had a spring conference, too?
There was always two.
No, we've only done-
We've only done a spring conference once or twice in the time I've been here, so.
But that would have been a traditional, that went somewhere. They used to do spring conferences, fall conferences. If you're on a block schedule, you probably have one every quarter. Those have kind of been slowly moving away. And I know that it doesn't, there's nothing better, and every teacher, every parent wants to meet their kids' teachers, and we want teachers and parents to get together, so we're not trying to discourage anything. If you want, give us a call. And like I said, I hope that it's, we get more responsive, too. If there are concerns or things aren't going well in the classroom, let's get together and talk about it and not wait until a day or feeling like, well, parent-teacher conferences were in November, and, you know, I don't know. I think that's a new kind of paradigm shift in how we think about communicating with each other, so.
So I would say, yeah, I agree. Good idea. Let's try it this year. If next year they come back, maybe the only thing with the committee is add a parent to the committee. Maybe they'd have, you know, to the calendar committee.
Sure.
Okay. Any other discussion, any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the 2017-18, 18-19 school calendar signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight, new business, 8.1.
We have an agreement with the Armory to lease space from them. We do yearly, and we're up to do this. It's there primarily for weather emergencies and for our school bus stop. And so it's just a formality that we do every year about this time, so recommend we do that?
Thank you. So do I have a motion to approve the lease with the Minnesota National Guard Armory?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Wees. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pals. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the lease with the National Guard Armory signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 8.2, first reading of middle school handbooks.
Is there much difference between the middle school and high school, or are they pretty much the same updates?
From an update standpoint, they're going to be pretty close. The only difference as you look at is the credit-bearing nature of a high school. Little nuances that you give to high school students versus middle school students. I would say probably eighty to ninety percent, it's the same.
Okay.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't have a middle school handbook for you, so I might have to do that at the next meeting.
But everything in the high school would be applicable in the middle school with the exception of the credit?
Yeah, any credit changes, the attendance stuff is going to be about the same. The, you know, and here I have some things regarding prom. That's not going to apply. But, and you'll kind of see, but the vast majority of what you see here will apply to the middle school handbook, and I'll get you a copy of that. So, okay, so if you have your copy there, I'm going to walk you through a lot of pieces here. There aren't many changes. I just kind of tweaked things, so everything is in yellow. On the first page, you can see we added the school song. Just thought it was kind of important to put that in, and that was kind of the main thing there, so that was an addition. If you want to move to page five. On page five, the yellow is not, it's not new information. It's, I reorganized the information there. So, not new, just reorganized and tried to be less wordy. Because several statements were stated several times, so I just stated it once, so. On page seven, it mentions teacher qualifications. I just threw an addition in there for the state education website. State's done a good job of identifying licensing, so I want to point that out as well in terms of teacher qualifications, that anybody can view that on the state website. Moving to page nine. Talking about school dances, I wanted a little more clarity regarding prom, and since prom was kind of fresh on my mind, that's what I tackled here. So I moved basically number five down to the new area there. And I wanted to state the six things there. Prom's designated for juniors and seniors. Tenth graders can attend if they're a guest of a junior or senior. Who the workers are, which in our school, we use ninth graders for workers. And then if we want to bring a guest, the parameters are they have to be tenth to twelfth grade and not older than twenty years, which allows pretty much anybody in who's asked. So, never really had issues with that. I just wanted clarity so that students know. And then prom guests need to sign up by the stated deadline. And then the last one is the one I've kind of gone round and round on in my mind. I put it in. And I put it in partly because when you hear from Mr. Anderson later, we were talking about what are the things that we do to encourage kids to put an emphasis on their academic side. So, I saw this in another school district. I'm like, okay. It kind of makes sense to me to have that academic standing, or you don't get to attend prom. I really don't have any other parameters, other than what I've just outlined here. Then again, I go back and I'm like, is this really necessary? Do I need to have academic parameters for the prom? So I've gone back and forth, and I did put it in. I talked to a few teachers, and they thought it was okay. It could be a very contentious issue because it will apply to some of our students. Generally, prom is open to everybody. So, curious if you have any feedback on that?
Well, is it considered like an extracurricular activity, kind of? No?
It's a social function of the school, much like homecoming. And I don't have academic parameters on homecoming activities or events for homecoming. We do keep kids who need some extra time to complete schoolwork when they're on the ICU list. But other than that, we allow them to attend our activities, and we have activities every day, so.
What is the purpose of the prom?
Purpose of the prom? Depends. Prom is, you know, it's just a fun school function where kids can get together and have time where they come together. A lot of it says a couple, and you get to be part of the grand march. It's a big social function.
And it's formal?
Yeah.
Which is a little bit different. So it's more of a formal event where the purpose of the prom would be to teach our young people how to conduct themselves at a formal event? Would that be fair enough to say?
There are expectations of behavior that would fit that, yes.
But getting dressed up and having a meal and big march and-
When would they be notified that they wouldn't be able to go? I mean, is this, I mean, how many, how much time would you have? I mean, that's-
They would have about a month. And that's kind of a source of contention, too, because normally, some kids plan two, three months out, especially when they're doing their promposals and all that. But what it states is measured by the most recent grading period. That would be the third quarter. So it puts a lot of emphasis on one quarter of learning. So if you have a failing grade for whatever reason, sorry, now you're out. So that's where I struggle. If this is necessary, on one hand, I like the concept. On the other hand, I don't.
I can see why you're torn. I mean, I think prom is a, it's a privilege for kids to be able to attend. But I think, my honest opinion is if you're going to start doing that for prom, then you better do it for homecoming, and you better do it for football games, and you better do it for, and really-
How do you, where do you-
Because it is an extracurricular activity, and if you're going to have those expectations on that, you better have them on all of them. But I can see what you're saying, because it is a privilege, and not every kid earns that privilege sometimes, but I can see why you're torn. I-
Yeah, it's hard.
Even like Kevin said, it's kind of a learning thing of how to act and dress up nice and be courteous to your date and everybody and-
Pictures.
Kind of a special thing to me, I mean-
Well, it is.
It is a really big deal to a lot of our students.
But on the other hand, I mean, keep your grades up if you want to go.
Right.
That's another- That's another thing, you know?
It's tough.
It's tough.
I would like to see everyone be able to go, but that's...
And I'm okay with that. As I said, I generally pull a couple of handbooks from area schools and I see what, where we're at, and I start looking and I think, oh, so I saw this, I'm like, interesting. And Clay and I have been talking a lot about academics and eligibility and, all right, let's see.
Well, if they value the experience, then that would be incentive to also value your academics enough that, to get yourself there.
Exactly.
I understand where you're coming from there, too.
Yeah, because you're a student first, and I'm like, have you talked to those other communities that have that in their handbook and how it goes? And how it's been working?
No, I haven't.
I just am curious how they, if it's working for them or not, or if they've seen issues or...
It would be applicable to one of our district goals, academic achievement.
Mm-hmm.
It would.
On the other hand, like I said, I'm fine scratching that one off and maybe seeing what other people do or how they've handled this before jumping in with both feet on it, because I know, I just know, it's gonna get kind of...
Yeah.
I've had some concerns, because it's a, it's a once-a-year event, one school year event, and it seems like, and I still think the school district has the right to use discipline in cases where someone is not deserving to go to the prom, they may, I mean, kids make bad decisions and sometimes hopefully they don't make it so bad, but it just seems like this is one event that I'm not sure, you know, like you bring up, I mean, can we put this in the same realm as going to a football game, going to, you know, and going and supporting, you know, they're all social events and they're, you know, but this one's just a little bit different than some of the other ones, so. That's why we have multiple readings of these things. Maybe two students, what their thoughts are.
Okay.
You know, a little feedback that way.
All right. And we'll bring that back at the next reading then. Continuing on, page ten, attendance, I put in a statement where I wanted to bring in the state statute one twenty-eight point two-two, so that's what I included there. At the bottom, number five is a strike-through. I didn't delete it fully, I just moved it, so it's deleted from there, and you'll see it on the top of page eleven. I just felt that needed its own, the makeup work needed its own area. Under the attendance policy, added language in, consistent with what we've been doing, I just wanted the language to be stated, and that's where I talk about surpassing ten absences in a semester. Under attendance appeals, if you look down, excused absences, we haven't had stated excused absences before, but I wanted to put that in, and those are consistent with what I've seen from other school districts, but also what the state puts in their statute, that one twenty-eight point two-two. I expanded on the exempt absences. Before it was just the number two that was a strike-through, and now I state students attending a state tournament in which Pipestone Area Schools is a participant. Verification of attendance, provided upon return, tenants will be excused as parent verified. And I thought it was off, it was just vague, state tournament attendance, so I know in our small area, when Edgerton goes or an RTR, they say, oh, well, I'm going to the state tournament too. So I wanted to clarify that, that it's, Pipestone needs to be a participant. Other exempt absences that I included would be suspensions, and then also college visits for seniors and college visits for juniors, so I wanted that language in. On the next page, on page twelve, added a little language on one B under appointments, could be generally done outside the normal school day, emphasizing to students, let's take care of these things, not during school. D is a deletion, that was kind of redundant with the emphasis we have on tardiness in the middle of page twelve. Also clarified, a tardy is roughly fifteen minutes, that's kind of our boundary from when a tardy turns into an absence. On the truancy, what I did here is instead of stating the whole truancy policy at the end of the handbook, I now summarized the key parts, which is, you know, it's defined in statutes two sixty-eight point oh-two, it talks about continual truant and habitual truant, so I have the meat of the policy, I just summarized and put it right in here versus at the end of the handbook, which is where it had been before. So that's where I cleaned up the language with truancy.
Maybe just, you know, Mr. Strausser mentioned up here, excused absences, these are what's dictated by the state. They do give local school boards authority to determine what's excused in your communities, because they can always be, you know, different things that go on and there's different cultures around the state, so I guess my question is, is I mean, if you guys want, are you okay with these? Do you want to add, you know, college visits, appointments? I mean, you can say that we don't want to get into intervening or determining those types of things with, with parents, so that's up to you.
How many tardies do they get before something happens or...
Per semester.
One per semester. Okay.
Yeah, and then we have various levels of consequences, mostly detention and things like that, yeah.
I'd say this is following the statute, stated the statute.
Mm-hmm. I'm fine. Page thirteen, again, I wanted to kind of see a theme, I'm adding things in from state statutes. I thought this was an important one in the middle of student discipline, just stating, you know, because we do have some kids who are eighteen, nineteen, twenty years old, so I thought it was important to include the conduct of all students under twenty-one years of age. So, that's there. At the bottom of thirteen, it says insubordination, I just added that word, because I thought that clarified that statement, what insubordination is. On page fourteen, number twelve, I deleted habitual truancy, because I defined that earlier as we talked. Number thirteen is nuisance, every once in a while, and maybe this is, this is part of a reactory reaction from me in the sense that, you know, kids have phones, and sometimes on their phones they like to do dog whistles or make other noises and do things that irritate other kids and other adults, you know, so those things happen, and that's kind of where I was going with nuisance items. To me, kids just got to understand that disrupts the normal day, and, you know, as you speak on dog whistles, if a kid's playing a dog whistle on their phone and it bothers and other kids are picking that up, that's very unpleasant, that's not, not good. So, that's where I was coming at with, with that one.
Corey, Mr. Strausser, I had a question on number nine.
Yes.
Any problem adding the term mood altering to your alcohol or other controlled substances? Alcohol, controlled substances, or mood altering?
I don't have any issue with that, no.
I think it's a good cover-all, because there's a lot of different things out there that can be used inappropriately.
Yeah.
So mood altering covers you a little bit better. Oh, this isn't in your handbook. Now it is.
What about like prescription, should prescription drugs be in there too?
That's controlled.
Oh, okay, that's okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Because they're, they're controlled. It's the things like spray paint and NyQuil and everything else that, you know, is just perfectly fine, but you can find a way to use it the wrong way, so, unfortunately.
Okay, page fifteen, I had a deletion there, just thought that was kind of redundant. In the middle, under code of conduct, I included this in, and this does come from the state statutes on what they feel exhibit, you know, quality character is, so I summarized that and put that in there. That's page fifteen, page sixteen.
That is state statute, Corey?
What?
That, you said that exhibit the character, that is state statute?
Yeah.
Do you want to put the state statute in there, or is it in there and I just don't see it?
No, it's not in there. I didn't, I didn't add.
Okay. Just so if they wanted to go see it.
Page sixteen, under student lockers, there are several of these where I started striking out the long statement, and I just put the policy number up there, because at the beginning of the handbook, I said, a complete copy of all policies are on file in our office, in the district office and so forth. Just clarified a little language on number seven, thought that read better. Backpacks, I moved that from another place.
Down low, number eleven.
Eight seventeen, number eleven.
There you go. So I moved that, made it its own, to clarify that. When you get to page seventeen, this is the acceptable use policy. This also was a full-size policy in our handbook, it was about six pages long, and I summarized the key acceptable use and safety components of it, it's policy five twenty-four, and that's what you have there in yellow, including even that last part, number four on the next page, the student online acceptable use consent form, everyone has to sign that when they come into our school. Page nineteen, again, just adding, making sure I had policy numbers, so as a reference. Likewise on page twenty, I did add a piece on counseling under student services, and it's missing a piece, there should be a piece there on our nurse, not sure why that's not there. I'll get that added, and that's, nothing changed there, it's just what our nurse provides. Policy five fifty-one, Mr. Anderson will go through that one here in a few minutes, and then if you go to page twenty-nine, I created a new title called district information, and this is where I summarized our food service policy, had Kathy Rogers help me with that one, and then also our chemical use and abuse policy, student surveys, so I put summaries of those in there, I thought that they were important to include in our student handbook. And then lastly, I added our five oh-four coordinator, Mrs. Dulles, and our title-nine coordinator, Mr. Anderson. And that is a brief look at the changes.
Thank you. Ooh, duh.
Any thoughts here?
That's why we have second and third.
Mr. Strausser. Any other thoughts or questions or discussion for Mr. Strausser on the high school? And the middle school's very similar, minus some of those other pieces though.
It'll be very similar, yes.
All right. Eight point four, first reading of elementary handbooks.
Okay, so we've been just doing, spending some time updating a lot of the stuff to reflect state statutes and those kinds of things, and then, you know, Corey and I have been working really diligently on attendance and, you know, doing some positive things to increase our attendance a little bit and decrease our unexcused, so, starting on page ten, I have some information on that. Things that are, we have changed or added are in red. Talked about some excused and unexcused absences on page eleven, and also the truancy policy on page twelve and thirteen. I am gonna add our attendance rewards, once we kind of figure out what those will be and how we're gonna utilize that, that's something the leadership team and I are working on, so that will at some point be added as well. We have our program supports in there, and those didn't change, food service. I did not put anything about the food service policy that we just kind of talked about this year, and that is something that we could probably...
I could send it to you.
Yeah, that'd be great, add that in as well. I think the biggest thing that I did put in here is towards the bottom or towards the end, and it would be our behavior, and it starts on page twenty-nine, our conduct and discipline. I'm trying to implement something with response to our responsive classroom that we've been kind of trying to kind of get going in our schools, and looking at trying to make things a little bit more consistent between the two buildings, the two elementary buildings, and so been talking to some other schools and also discussing some things with the teachers and our leadership team, and we came up with a on-target arrows concept, and in our policy before, we had that we would be safe, respectful, and responsible, and we just broke that down into each category of classroom, lunchroom, hallway, bathroom, playground, and bus or transportation, and what we would have those expectations for each place look like, and looking at rewarding kids for positives, so when we see them doing something positive, getting them an arrow card. And then once the classroom gets six arrow cards, then the principal would come in and give them a arrow to place on their target in their room. Once they get six in their room, they would get a big arrow target to put on the big target in the hallway. So just looking at more positive and just really pushing that positive behavior and not always reprimanding for the negative behavior. And then this is something we would review at the beginning of the year, and then hoping to use our tech integrationists to make some videos of positive behavior, and being able to have those available, so if, let's say, one of our teachers, there seems to be a lot of bus issues, well, let's pull up this video and let's review, what are, how are we supposed to act on the bus when we're on the bus? So it's all about learning how to be a good citizen and be a good, you know, have good character and that kind of thing. We have some steps as well that we, you know, talked about, and how we would utilize them if you were to eventually send your, send a student to the office, and how we would handle that. And we used to have a technology and internet stuff on there, but we are kind of working on that policy, so I didn't put anything in there as of now, so, as a district, we're working on that yet, so. That's it in a nutshell, five minutes for me, not even.
Tony, can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just curious, back on page ten.
Ten.
The attendance, yeah. I'm just curious, were you, did, are those from research, the percentages?
Yeah, we, Corey and I found those.
Where do you want to scroll that?
From, where's that website that we, that...
Attendance Manic Chronic at Risk.
AttendanceWorks.org.
Where'd it come from?
Great resources and information on that website concerning attendance.
Under the pledge of allegiance, is mine just, I don't see it all, or is it?
It's, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's, I noticed that too.
Okay.
I did a little tweaking in here too.
That's fine.
But it didn't send right, so I might have...
Okay, that's okay.
It'll be in there next time.
And then the on-target arrows, is that PBIS kind of?
Kind of, a little bit.
It's a tweak off of it, or a...
Yep.
Kind of a, your own, your own deal off of the PBIS?
Yep. We're trying to, trying to get some consistency is our main, main thing.
So is this school-wide, or is this, I mean, it's all then, it's classroom, all classrooms will use this and the whole, because it's all over the lunchroom and hallway?
Both buildings, yep, consistent throughout the whole building. I figure then when, they know exactly what we're expected of them in each...
Consistently.
Yeah, and then when you go from grade one to grade two, it's not gonna matter, it's gonna be the same, and you're gonna expect, have the same expectations, so it's not a guessing game.
Just curious, did you have a committee helping you with all this? That's a lot of stuff right there.
Um, not really. I had been wanting to, but it was one of those things where it's kind of crunched for time, and leadership team looked at it, so I did have them look at it. And like I said, at one of our last staff meetings, I did put it in their hands and said, "This isn't in stone yet."
So, this will start next, next, in the fall?
I would like to start it next fall.
I'll be curious to hear how it goes.
Yeah, I'm excited to try it, see what happens.
Because PBIS has good reviews.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Ms. Bartman? Any other questions for her? All right, eight point five, first reading of athletic handbooks. Mr. Anderson?
Oh, come on, appreciate you seeing me.
Okay.
I'm going to take Jack's chair, look comfortable.
We got one idea.
I'd like you to give it up.
You can get up here on the head shell.
I don't, I don't know if our pages are numbered, but basically, we just cleaned up some stuff in here, and some things that didn't make sense anymore. When you get the policies, the first one, there, we just cleaned that up, when we wanted students to participate there, and things like that, for head coaches to get rosters. Another one down there, just all managers, had some weird wording in there, so we just changed it, so it made more sense. Policies though, here, we would like to go back to every three years for participants in athletics, cheerleading, and everything, to get physical to them. And we recommend that they would do that beginning of their seventh grade year, and their tenth grade year, and that would cover them for their whole season. You know, I mean, the vast majority of high schools in Minnesota, not all of them do it this way, and this is what recommended by Minnesota State High School League, who is poorly cautious on safety with concussions, heat advisories, and all this stuff. So, I think if there was anything to go yearly by, they would have already recommended it, so. And it really creates a headache of paperwork, and it's a real big headache with our athletes. I know parents would like this, and I'm all for it too, so let us...
Any thoughts on the board? Because this is, having to have a physical every year is unusual. Is there any strong feelings by...
No.
Why we would do it every year?
Well, I'm a nurse, so I would promote a physical every year, every student.
Do you?
Because that's the world I live in.
Right.
Yeah.
But three is what is pretty traditional, I don't, no...
It's a hardship eventually too, for a lot of kids, you know, that can afford physical. The next thing, under the clearance slip requirements, this is when you sign up for sports. Oh, there, we just took out some wording, with coaches' clinics, it didn't make any sense, because if you have four coaches, or more than one assistant coach, things like that, I just cleaned that up. There, that one, we just added number six, have a physical on file, it should have been in there. Then, the next page, under state tournaments, we are greatly under what most schools in our conference give for state tournaments, so I opted not to be the highest in the conference, it's not. All right, I think Worthington's a thirty-six, but a thirty was pretty good, seven for breakfast, ten for lunch, thirteen for dinner, I just separated it out there, and then thirty is A, as opposed to the twenty, which I think we were behind in both cities, and trying to make three meals for twenty bucks, good luck. So, that was kind of the thought process there. And then, then we get into a big one, when we get to social media. So, I've been looking, and you know, with social media affecting athletics and activities all the time, you know, I have to deal with this, and I, you know, we need to put a social media policy into our athletic handbook. I got good ones from Marshall, and some other schools that have done it, so I didn't invent this all by any stretch, but I'm a good stealer, I stole it. And we tied it into our bowling policies, and we tied it into some state statutes, I think, state statutes or policy numbers, I can't remember which one it was. It also ties into Minnesota State High School League code of conduct there, so this was our, we went through a couple, a few times, a number of times, and kind of liked it, so hope you do too, I think it makes a good social media policy for promoting our, you know, for being responsible for what you put out there too. Like I say, I don't go looking for anything social media-wise, and I'm not the social media guru, like, in, with that imagination, but if it comes to my desk, then I have to deal with it, so if I would be proactive, put something out that was good, put out there.
Do some coaches not even let their athletes get on?
Um, in college, they certainly do have, they have restrictions. I don't know that we can have restrictions at high school level, but yeah, in college , there's a lot of interesting stories I could tell you about college recruiting, and what they come in and tell kids right away, we're still in high school, and it's amazing stuff, so it's, you're always evolving all the time too, I mean, just trying to stay out of the game a little bit. I just thought this was a good step for our district. Then we get to activity, academic, and athletic eligibility, I have wanted to change this for three years, and so we finally sat down and did it. Basically, changes our policy from a credit policy to an F policy, all right? The positives, there's positives and negatives in both. Under a credit policy, in general, it's really hard becoming eligible academically in our school, almost impossible. But if you ever do become academically ineligible, you aren't going to get eligible anytime soon. I mean, sometimes it's, sometimes it's impossible to get academic eligible again. You know, if you fall, if you fell six credits behind, because you had a really bad freshman year, you'd never be academically eligible here, unless you made up six credits, which might take an act of God, you know. So, this changes that to an F policy, which now, if you get an F in a quarter, you're ineligible for two weeks or two contests, whichever greater, but yet, there's a carrot there, two weeks later, you could be eligible, as long as you're passing all your classes, and your teacher's signed off that you passed all your classes. So, I like it from the standpoint, number one, we don't have the kids who are getting Fs, yet still participate with no ramifications. I think we can use grades as a carrot, if you will, to help them along in their academic success, and I think this policy does that. One thing in here, I've also tied in, is if you turn, keep going down a little bit, obviously, right here, is under A, maintains a minimum of one point six five GPAs, and has no F in any class. So, what that means is, it would be possible to get a D in every class, you have a one point O for the quarter, and then you'd be academically ineligible too. I didn't invent that number, I want you to know, sorry, I didn't invent that number, actually, I think that's a lot of school districts have a minimum GPA into it. Do we have to have that minimum GPA part of it? We do not, all right? So, we just don't want that part in there, so just realize, I just, I've been very comfortable. Does that ever come into play, where someone gets no S and has less than one point six five? Hardly ever. I had this policy in a couple of our schools, I was at, I can't remember a student qualifying under that, but it's always, in every school I've been at, has had an F policy, they've had a minimum GPA to go along with a no S. If you like it, great, if you don't like it, you get rid of it, and it doesn't matter to me, because it hardly ever comes into play, okay?
Well, to me, if you're at a one point six five, you're probably going downhill, so you, I mean, to me, it'd be better to catch them then, before you...
Yeah, that's kind of the ideal.
Yeah, I mean...
So, yeah, so...
And maybe just, the argument to that is, is do I earn my credit for a one point O GPA, Mr. Strasser?
Do you, or do our students?
Does the student earn, does the student?
Yes, our students.
Yeah, I got credit for all my Ds. Do you earn credit for a one point O? Will you graduate from Pipestone area schools if you have a one point O GPA? And you pass all of the courses?
You could, yes.
Yeah.
And of course, the counter to that is, we hold our athletes a little bit higher standard than to their previous schools. Again, I think it's a really good policy, I have it before, I've dealt with it before, I know how to administrate it real well, so I'm very confident moving forward with it. It's different for a category one athletics, and category two, one thing that'll happen, because it happened in our school, I was at, and all this was a bigger deal than any athlete, this is two weeks, was the lead in our play, got an F in the quarter, couldn't be the lead for the first of the three play days they had, and they were like, "Well, what do we do?" I said, "Well, you can have someone else be the lead," so that was a big deal, but yet, well, why shouldn't that student be held to the same standard? So, I mean, those things don't, we get it come up. Then number four, we tied into the ICU list, which I think was really nice, so we kind of made that part of the academic policy as well. We have coaches discretion, number four, you can read that, and then we put, you know, there's always extenuating circumstances, so we kind of add that asterisk there, over, you know, things that can happen, and I think that was just a wise thing to do, if we meet as administrators, and with the teachers, and such, and with the family, and there's the, you know, sometimes things come up, and so, we have some leeway there, which I think is, is good. And then, just an ineligible player, how they're, how they're, cannot dress for contests, if they're ineligible for any reason, and coaches can decide who they want to take along on a weightlifting as well, is kind of what that reads. So, that is the academic policy.
Can you?
And that would be a big change for our district, because we've been going with credits for quite a while.
Clay, you had ineligible player guidelines there, and up on number four, there seems to be a contradiction.
Yeah, so we'll just have to fix that.
They can't, they can't dress, and up here, it says the coach gets to decide that, so...
Yeah, I think we probably took some language from the old, and so the coach basically riding the bus, and things like that. I think, yeah, I think we were generalizing, we probably threw that back in their bench.
So, do they, at this time, do they get a sit on the bench, or they don't?
Coach's discretion.
Oh.
Yeah, so this is just to clarify those types of things. It's a good question, because, you know, I mean, sometimes it's very detrimental to having an ineligible player ride on, ride on the bus.
Right.
You know, so, so...
Well, sometimes I think it looks bad, when you have ineligible players sitting on the bench.
Yeah.
I mean, to me, I mean, if it's an injury, fine, but if it's because you're doing something you're not supposed to be, I don't, it doesn't look good for the school either. Not that they know that, but...
I would also, I guess I would just add the administrators discretion, you may want to put an appeal, instead of just having an asterisk saying administrators have discretion, you may want to just add a number six, and just say, "What's the appeal process on this?" So that if there's circumstances, then it just kind of, okay, how do you do that? You appeal to the F leg.
What do you appeal process is all for itself?
I just put in an appeal process instead of that.
Yeah.
Good one.
Sometimes we just try and simplify, maybe sometimes we simplify it.
Is there anything else?
I think that's it for me. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Anderson? And then, the ones we've already...
If there's one of these, by the way, hard, I made copies.
No, we got it here.
Got them all.
Thank you.
I just like your idea of changing that, F to that F policy.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Yep. All right, let's move to eight point six, approve resolution rescinding prior resolution that converted voter-approved referendum authority to a board-approved referendum authority.
So, I'm gonna...
Let's go have a motion. Thank you, Mr. Oy. No, it's okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. This is Wees, so now...
Well...
Yes, go ahead, please.
Up, we have the resolution here, and this stems from our operating levy, and ten years, nine years ago, when the school district passed the operating levy, it was for an amount of about a thousand seventy per student, and there were two questions. Well, in the last nine years, there have been some changes at the state, and the state has passed laws that give the school board the discretion to levy without voter approval. So, they gave the district the right to levy four hundred and twenty-four dollars per student. Now, they were very wise in saying, "You can't do that on top of what you already have." So, the four twenty-four was a part of what was currently in place. And then, they gave authority to some metro districts for an additional three hundred, and another year later, the outstate said, "Wait a minute here, why can't we?" So then, they also created another, and they, they put the word in this three hundred of board converted, again, to protect you from adding the three hundred on top of. There's also board created, and you can't create three hundred dollar authority when you have a levy in place, you can only convert. Well, we're at a point right now, where our levy, there is no levy for 2018 going forward, 2019, or however, 2018 pay nineteen, there is nothing. So, what we're doing is, is you are revoking a resolution from August 2013 that said you can convert your levy to now, that's what this is doing, and then we're going to have another resolution after this. So, this is saying, we are rescinding the resolution from August 26, 2013, converting its operating levy to board-approved.
Beautiful review from last month.
How's that?
That was a great review from last month.
Okay.
So, giving us the opportunity to use that money if we do not pay us some money.
Correct, this is, this gives the school board and the school district, through board action, the ability to levy up to seven hundred and twenty-four dollars, the four twenty-four and the three hundred. So, it's a safeguard for us now with the levy coming off, and where things are at.
Okay.
So, it has been motioned and seconded, so Mr. Oy, you are the person who motioned it, I believe he has to read the resolution, is that correct?
Let me get it up, then.
I got it up.
Yeah, it's up there if you want, and I think...
Read the whole top thing, or everything, the whole, everything?
You read the following resolution, move its adopt and adoption.
Why don't I just get it on here?
Yeah.
Rescinding the prior.
Oh, go down a little bit, so he can read it, there you go, right there, there you go.
The following members were present and the following were absent, I gotta say who was here or not?
No.
Okay. Amber Lance Oy introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Resolution rescinding prior resolution that converted voter-approved referendum authority to a board-approved referendum authority. Be it resolved by the school dis, board of independent school district number twenty-six eighty-nine, state of Minnesota, S. Falls. On August 26, 2013, the board adopted a resolution to convert a portion of its voter-approved referendum authority to a board-approved referendum authority. The 2013 resolution referenced above is hereby rescinded, effective for taxes payable in 2017 and thereafter. The clerk is authorized and directed to submit a copy of this adopted resolution to the Minnesota Department of Education as soon as reasonably practicable after its The motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by Katie Wees. On a roll call vote, the following voted in favor.
So, we will start with you, Katie.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Whereupon said rules declared duly passed and adopted.
So, motion carries. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Oy. Now, moving on to eight seven, approve the resolution authorizing a board-created referendum authority. Do I have a motion to approve that? Nobody wants to approve, because nobody wants to read it.
Somebody wants to.
Thank you, Mrs. Falls, do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Oy. All right, there you go.
Well, so, we just, we just rescinded a resolution that gave the board, that converted board authority to three hundred dollars from the voter-approved operating levy. This is saying, the board is creating the authority to levy the three hundred dollars per adjusted pupil amount, as where we're at, so...
I have a question.
Okay.
Okay, so if you look at the first one that we just passed, and I may just be looking at this wrong, do I have to turn this on? I may not be right.
Yes, ma'am.
The 2013 resolution above is hereby rescinded, effective for taxes payable in 2017, okay? Okay, but then, the next page, when we're looking at this, this doesn't become effective until taxes payable in 2018, and you got a year lapse.
And I asked the same question to the department, and they, they directed me for us to have that language, because effectively, 2017 has already happened. So, you have that in place by voter approval, so the board creation isn't necessary. So the board created isn't necessary in 2017. So.
Okay.
We're collecting that right now.
Correct, which will be our eighteen revenue.
Yep. So that's already in place. So the board rescinding that motion really has no impact. If you remember, the three hundred dollar conversion wasn't really.
Didn't have an impact on there.
Didn't have a factor in your current stance.
Okay.
Yes, it's confusing, Jackie. And that's good yet because I asked the same question to the Department of Education. It seems confusing. And now this board created goes into effect for pay eighteen, which is for eighteen, nineteen school year.
Okay, I just wanted to draw on your revenue.
Thank you, Jackie.
The, the original 2013 motion was good for five years. So we've used up, we still had it for two more years. But now we've taken it away and put it into this created. So I know it, it looks interesting. It's just fun to make Jackie a little nervous.
I'm glad Jackie's on top of it.
I know.
We thank you for that, Jackie. He, yes. So Marcy.
Member Marcy Pals introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Resolution authorizing a new board approved referendum authority. Be it resolved by the school board of independent district, school district number twenty-six eighty-nine, state of Minnesota as follows. Current authority, the district has no current voter approved referendum authority. Approval of new authority pursuant to Minnesota statute, section one twenty-six C point one seven subdivision nine A, the board hereby determines to authorize a new board approved referendum authority in the amount of three hundred dollars per adjusted pupil unit. This new board approved referendum authority shall be further adjusted based on final pupil unit data. It is the intention of the board to create the maximum authority for which it is eligible, not to exceed three hundred dollars per adjusted pupil unit. This new board approved referendum authority as adjusted shall be applicable for five years, beginning with taxes payable in 2018. The board may subsequently reauthorize the board approved referendum authority in increments of up to five years. Clerk is authorized and directed to submit a copy of the adopted resolution to the Minnesota Department of Education as soon as reasonably practicable after its adoption, but in no event later than September thirty, 2017. The motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by Lanzoy on a roll call vote, following voters in favor.
Marcy.
Yes.
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 So, does she have to finish reading that? No, she's good. All right, so motion carries unanimously.
All right.
Eight point eight. Approve stipulation to amend unit description between PADS P and Pipestone Area Schools.
The, the district is looking and making a change and this is involving the AV coordinator position and the district tech assistant. And the two are very closely associated. When we were going through the job descriptions of what we wanted to do, instead of having the board eliminate the AV position and then post, we worked with the union and the Bureau of Mediation Services to go through and MSBA and our school attorney to basically make an agreement that we're amending the unit description and both are agreeable, that the AV coordinator is going to be eliminated effective June thirtieth and the new tech assistant position will be created. And that we would move the AV position or the person, Jen Dunn, into the tech assistant. When we go through, you just, you know, you can't just change the name of a, of a position and then eliminate it. So, I mean, after doing a lot of checking, this is where, this is what we've come up with and what I recommend the board do for that change that we have, so.
So do I have a motion to approve the stipulation to amend the unit description between the PADS P, Pipestone Area Schools?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Wees, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pals. Any other questions? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight point nine, suburban discussion.
All right, we have three Suburbans. We got two 2008s and a 2012. They're both, they're, all three are classified as type three vehicles. And with the two being 2008s, when they're up, we're going to have to get two new Suburbans. And we just have been talking with the, was it the budget committee or, I think, yeah, budget committee? We were talking about this.
Briefly.
Of, of just updating and, and, and trading in one of the 2008s for a new one this year. So then we're on like a four-year increment. Every four years, we're replacing one of our Suburbans when they get older. So it seemed to make sense. I know that Director Botts was on the committee and he had a question about should we keep this fourth one? So I've done a little checking and, and really, we don't have a lot of conflicts. It maybe comes up a little bit here in the spring because golf and track use it. And then if we have people going to meetings, a little bit in the spring. But really, we don't have, or we don't have a vehicle. The other item was, is where would we put it in the garage? We'd probably end up moving the driver's ed car or the pickup or something would have to sit outside. So right now, I think we're good at just keeping three Suburbans and, and the minivan, which is a 2013, which is pretty close to the 2012. But there is a lot less miles on that minivan. It doesn't get used as heavily as the Suburban. So if I were to do anything, I'd maybe say, maybe we look at that minivan being upgraded to a, to a Suburban. But Jackie thinks they're too big and she doesn't want to park a Suburban. So probably have to keep the minivan, just for Jackie.
I like good minivan.
And other people.
Oh, and other people.
I'm with Jackie, I like minivan.
It's nice. It's, it's a good riding thing too, so.
It's a lot better to get them staggered out so we're not, because in 2020, we have to, we have to get two new Suburbans.
Right.
No matter, it's state law, correct?
And, and this is in our capital outlay fund. And, I mean, you can kind of budget with fifteen thousand a year every four years and then you've, you've got it in there to, to keep upgrading. So, and we'll get something valued. I think we have sixty thousand budget in capital outlay, but we're going to get some trade-in and value on the other one. So basically, I think what we're looking for tonight is for the board to give us the go-ahead to begin the bid process for a trade-in of one of our 2008s for a new Suburban.
You need an approval to start the bid.
I think a motion, an approved motion that says go ahead.
So do I have a motion to approve the beginning?
To go out for bids for a new Suburban.
To go out for bids.
Tom move.
Thank you, Mr. Oy, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wees. Any other discussion, any other questions? For the superintendent or for Jackie?
Do I have a bid for a new Suburban?
For, to go out and get bids for new?
New Suburban with a trade-in of one of the 2008s, which I think Cal is, I think he suggests number, or number three. But I'll just want to make, I think we can take care of that.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the, getting the bids for the new Suburbans signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, so for eight point ten through eight point eighteen, approving policy one oh two, one oh three, two oh one, two oh two, two oh seven, two oh eight, two ten, two eleven, two twelve.
We're busy.
Will get the approval and the second, and then Mr. Enerson said that he would discuss each policy for us. So do I have a motion to approve policy one oh two all the way down through two twelve, eight ten through eight eighteen? Thank you, Mrs. Pals, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wees.
All right. The policy committee spent, boy, a good two hours. We went through a number of policies and these are the ones that just have just statutory updates or grammatical changes. There's no real change in the intent or the meaning of these policies. So we recommend just one reading. Let's just pass them and we can do that. The other policies were reviewed and there's more significant changes, so we will take those differently. But policy one oh two is the equal education opportunity, few grammar changes and the word, term gender was added. For one oh, policy one oh three, which is complaints, this policy states that the district will take seriously all concerns and complaints. One word was changed and a statute was updated. So again, nothing has changed in any of that. Two oh one, legal status of the school board, two board duties removed from one item to another. Two oh two, school board offices, officers, there were two date changes. Something was added to the clerk's duties and it stated that there would be an annual evaluation of the principles by the superintendent. Policy two oh seven is the public hearing, which has just a one statute update. Two oh eight is development, adoption and implementation of policies. There was some grammatical changes and the annual policy updates were added into it, which we already have in place. Item two ten, conflict of interest for school board members. Basically changed the amount a board member can earn from the school district from five thousand to eight thousand dollars. And then there was just one added clarification for voting on a contract when a spouse was an employee. So that was the only additions there. Policy two eleven, criminal or civil action against the school district, school board member, employee or student. There was one statute update. And policy two twelve, school board member development was an update to the state board member training stipulating that it be in school finance and management and that that's what the MSBA puts together for us. So those were the changes. Like I said, the policy committee went through and felt that these policies should be just given one reading and we move on. So that's the updates. Any questions on?
Any questions on those? Any other questions, any other discussion? I do know at our officers' training, they recommend that we read all the two hundred policies very closely as school board members and you're supposed to review those yearly. That's what they like us to do. So they're all there. It's nice to review them on our. Any other questions or comments?
I can add, how many policies do we have? We have a hundred and?
We figure we could do thirty-seven, you know, a year.
About thirty, about three, thirty-five, thirty-five policies a year is what we should review. So this was what, thirty?
This was only like thirteen.
Oh.
But we had other ones that think that we.
Policy committee is going to have another two-hour meeting.
They will be updated with MSBA generally by the end of this month.
And then what we're do, I think this is the time too where Deb will put these online. So as we go through this, and it's just, it's just one of those things. But now that we're doing it, hopefully in three years, we'll have all of our policy manual online and then we'll be able to just update it that way too. So it's just nice for the public to be able to have access to it.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions, discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving policies one oh two, one oh three, two oh one, two oh two, two oh seven, two oh eight, two ten, two eleven and two twelve signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight nineteen, first reading of policy two oh four, school board.
All right, school board minutes. There was a significant section of language added regarding the recording of closed minute meetings. And you've closed some meetings in the past and you've usually had your attorney advise you. So we followed what is in statute, but this updates our, our policies to actually reflect how you will conduct yourself and what you will record and how long you'll record it in a closed meeting. And, you know, why we have closed meetings, which is the next policy. But that's basically about how you keep the minutes of those. It also added language regarding the publication of regular meeting minutes, which I think is a little bit more, we, we put out our yearly schedule, so then it gives us a whole different timeline for updating that. So overall, there was just that big chunk that was added. I don't think there's a lot of discussion, it's just statutory changes, so.
Okay. Any questions on that? Go to eight point two oh, first reading of policy two oh five.
The open meetings and closed meetings, this added language regarding social media use by board members. And basically what that was about was is saying that if you're on Facebook with the other board members, that's not a violation of the open meeting law, as long as every, all of your communications are public. Usually that's just, you're not talking about school business on, on social media or on Facebook. But if you do, then it, then it becomes a little bit, and if you're having closed, if there's any dialogue between board members, you probably want to watch that, so. But we, we kind of already know about email and such. And then it also added language regarding the publication of regular meeting minutes, or excuse me. It added language regarding reasons for closed meetings and the recordings of all closed meetings, which again, you've had a few of them, you've followed them accordingly. But our policies did not have these, this updated language and it needed to be added in there. So that's policy two oh five.
Thank you. Any questions? For Mr. Anderson? All right, eight point two one, first reading of policy two oh six.
This is about public participation in school board meetings, complaints about persons at school board meetings and data privacy considerations. There was some language added clarifying what is public information about applicants for appointment to a public body. Boday? Body? Body? That's right. I got a strange word there. Oops, that didn't sound good. So anyway, this is just saying that if people are appointed to different positions by the school district, they could be subject to data. Don't laugh at me. Data pri.
Privacy.
Some data privacy issues. We're almost done, we're going to get through this. And it talks about some right to privacy of district employees. And then there was also some things about head coaches. I believe head coaches can have a right to a hearing and request for those things, which has been around for quite a while. They also talked and gave some guidelines on public opportunity to be heard. You know, this is where we get into our open forum and there's a time, place and manner. And so the procedural things, I think you want to stick to what's on your agenda. But if your community is having and wants to speak with the board, you may want to have a listening session before the board. You may want to just simply have a special board meeting to have a public hearing about matters. But that policy does ensure that a community member can speak to the board and be heard by the board. And, you know, the board doesn't act on any of those things, but it does give that right to the public so that they have that, so they know that they can be heard, so. And that's, that's where that's at. And then there was some procedural language for if you do have open forum, there are criminal penalties for anyone who violates and abuses open forum and were to speak out and violate data privacy. So those are all part of this policy that have been added, so that's pretty major.
Thank you. Any thoughts or questions? All right, eight point two two, first reading of policy seven fifty, general fund balance policy.
I just threw, put that up here. Our fund balance policy, and maybe Jackie can help me clarify this, but we, our previous policy read that we used all of our fund balances?
That the previous one just said unassigned fund balances and a general fund, comma, food service fund, comma, community education fund.
So, and what we are doing here is, the focus here is general fund. We're only talking about the general fund in calculation of our fund balance, not all of those other dedicated fund balance.
And actually, this paragraph right here, this is exactly how the Department of Ed determines their percentage to determine if you're in statutory operating debt. So it's consistent with what they do.
So really, what we did is we just changed one sentence.
Yep.
On how we determine. On how we determine our fund balance. And I think you even said the auditors will use a little bit different format, but this is what we want to use to determine whether or not we're in that twenty-five to thirty-four percent range. And those are the ones that were recommended and needed a first reading tonight.
Any questions on that last one, on policy seven fifty? Any thoughts? Well, I just want to thank the committee. Holy cow. And you're not done yet. Thanks for all the hard work, the committee, the policy committee, so. Thank you. Eight point two three, retirement letter from Marilyn Flanagan, paraprofessional. This is an addition.
Yeah. Marilyn's worked for the school district for twenty-seven years as a paraprofessional, so we really thank her. Tony, I don't know if you had it, I think she was elementary, so.
Yeah, she was elementary title.
Yeah.
For how many years?
Twenty.
What, is it twenty?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
But part of that, she was pretty proud of being a Jasper.
She served Jasper also and came over in the.
Yep. So she.
Do we have to move to accept the resignation?
Move to accept and thank her for her use of service.
Do I have a motion to accept Marilyn's retirement?
So move.
Thank you. Mr. Roy, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pals. Any other thoughts other than thank you very much, Marilyn?
Yes, thank you.
And best wishes to her as she starts that new chapter. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the letter of resignation from Marilyn for her retirement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Thank you, Mrs. Pals.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries or adjourned.
What time did we say the work session?